... December 4th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Riegel. Here. Just for the record, Darren Monkin with one piece of pizza and I knew that wasn't going to be enough. I couldn't get the whole plate full. Funny. Well, thank you all for being here this evening. I know it pains you, but we have to do this. So, tonight, we're going to start with Jackie. Make sure she didn't have a mouthful.
No, I am all set. I'd like Jessica Feller, Human Resources Manager, to come up. And as part of our succession planning, I'm going to allow Jessica to take the lead on this and I'll just be here as a safety net. How's that sound, Jess?
That sounds good.
Good.
Well, first and foremost, before I begin, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the rest of the human resource staff that is present tonight, aside from myself. We have Lori Diaz, who is our part-time HR coordinator, and we have Whitney Faust, who was new to our office as of October, replacing Julie Williams, who left this past summer.
Welcome.
They are here in support as well.
Yes, you can pull the mic a lot closer to you.
Okay. Can you hear me now? All right. Well, first and foremost, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'd like you to refer to page six of the budget for the line item detail and programmatic budget for the DAS budget. As you will have seen and as you likely know, the Department of Administrative Services is primarily charged with providing quality human resource services to attract, develop, motivate, and retain qualified employees to fulfill the mission of each of our departments. We are also responsible for all aspects of human resources to include recruitment, compensation, development, compliance, and health and safety services. I'd like to take the opportunity to highlight some of these areas. For recruiting, in 2017, we recruited and hired for 43 positions, with some positions having multiple vacancies. Thirty-six of those positions were full-time or permanent part-time positions. We had 49 seasonal positions, and this included both our safety forces for police and fire personnel as well. In an effort to enhance our recruiting efforts and amplify our overall candidate experience, this year, we did partner with Recruiting.com to build our career site for the city of Delaware. This site launched during the summer of 2017 and allows for candidates to view our postings in a web-enabled format, such as on their phone, which is more user-friendly and, quite honestly, how people are viewing and applying for jobs these days. In addition, candidates can quickly and easily share our jobs using social media tools that promote engagement within their networks, which further helps to, again, get the word out on our positions. Recruiting.com provides for increased visibility of our jobs through distribution to a network of sites and through readable URLs that contain keywords in order to help search engines find our jobs, which is incredibly important. This is commonly referred to as "search engine optimization," or SEO technology. With the title actually appearing in the URL, a candidate is more likely to be able to find it upon conducting an initial search. Through Recruiting.com, we also have access to monthly analytics that further help us to target our recruiting efforts. As part of this effort, that was primarily led by our HR Coordinator, Lori Diaz, three high-definition videos were produced to help tell Delaware's story. These showcased the unique culture of this city and ultimately what it's like to be an employee for the city of Delaware. We're really proud of these videos. I know we had a press release that went out in the summer, letting everybody know about these videos. There's been a lot of sharing on social media, and we're thrilled that they, again, are clearly conveying the message of the city of Delaware and what it's like to work here to potential candidates. If you haven't had the opportunity, I would just encourage you to go to our new dedicated career site, which is jobs.dellawareohio.net, and be able to view those videos if you haven't done so already. This project could not have been completed without the vision and dedication of our HR staff, including Lori and myself, and we're pleased to provide this update to you. Recruiting for 2018 will include an extensive process for the replacement of our Public Utilities Director, Brad Staten, who you guys know is retiring.
No, he didn't.
Right. He's retiring in early 2018, and this recruitment process is currently underway. In terms of development for training and development, by the end of the year, we will have held nine department head and supervisory training sessions to equip our management and supervisory staff with the tools they need to effectively manage their employees. These training sessions are developed by HR staff in coordination with internal departments and external entities. And we have held these sessions on a regular basis since 2006, covering a wide variety of topics. Some of our 2017 training topics included drug-free workplace and reasonable suspicion testing, situational leadership, managing employee performance, public records, understanding conflict, ethics in the workplace, EEOC review of laws that are important in terms of hiring and promoting and disciplining our employees, violence in the workplace, and characteristics of quality supervision. These are all value-added resources our department provides. Development for succession planning. In order to begin to address the dramatic changes in our workforce that will occur over the next 10 years, we began this year in partnering with PrattCo., who is an established vendor and trusted resource of the city, to assess and development of a succession plan to ensure our continued growth and sustainability. The first phase, like I said, took place this year in which we assessed our leadership to define the behaviors and characteristics that make our current leaders successful. And defining these was actually the first step in helping us down this path. It helps us to identify where gaps exist between our current makeup and our future needs as we continue to grow. Moving forward into Phase Two for 2018, we will begin to target our current and impending vacancies with our leadership behaviors in place and develop and hire specifically for those behaviors that are critical in making our leaders successful. For professional development, we identify -- excuse me. Development of the identified behaviors that I was initially just speaking of in our current and future leaders is critical to our organizational success. Without this piece in place, we lack the direct validated knowledge of the behaviors that make our leaders successful in our organization. Therefore, we are requesting continued support in sourcing and identifying training opportunities for development that will tie directly into those leadership behaviors that have been So now for 2018. Some of our goals, as you'll see in our budget message, included development and implementation of a professional development curriculum that directly ties into the leadership behaviors we've identified of the succession planning process. In addition to which, we will complete the conversion of our employee personnel records to electronic form. And we also hope to implement -- excuse me, our formal merit pay system and associated technology to begin with our department head, personnel, and management staff. At this time, I'd also like to touch on the added value of our HR Coordinator position. As I mentioned, Lori Diaz in that capacity. As you may recall, this position was added as part of the 2017 budget. The primary responsibilities at that point that were identified for this position were fulfillment of the recruitment lifecycle for all positions within the city, active recruiting, onboarding, administering the city's wellness program, which we are currently transitioning for 2018, and professional and technical HR support for our departments, as well as assisting with special projects. Lori has brought a wealth of knowledge and expertise to the position and has proven to be a valued resource for all of our departments. It doesn't go maybe a week or so, I think, at most, between hearing praises from Lori from our personnel. I continue to be grateful for the level of professionalism that she has added to our operations. Lori has an extensive background in various aspects of HR that have all lent themselves to be an asset in our department. As you may recall why this position was added, in 2015, Jackie was reclassified to Assistant City Manager. Since that time, we have been working to transition her responsibilities for day-to-day management of the HR function. While the HR Coordinator position was added in 2017, our overall headcount hasn't actually changed, or increased for that matter. In fact, our department is currently operating under the same headcount as we did in 2006 when my former position was added to the budget, that of HR Specialist. Once I was reclassified to HR Manager, we did not backfill the HR Specialist role. I say that in that as the city continues to grow and we increase staffing levels throughout our departments, it will be increasingly important that we add capacity within our department to effectively deliver the quality services that I think our departments have come to rely on. And as work continues in identifying a new finance software, it is important to identify a solution that's going to incorporate a human resource information system, commonly referred to as an HRIS, to help our department gain efficiency in reporting and analytics that will help us to effectively perform and support our departments. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Just ask about the videos. What type of results have you received on those? What types of -- any concrete data you've been able to wow and increase these things?
So, because that -- we only have our basis going back to July when our site went live. We'll continue to monitor that, but we're averaging somewhere around 3,800 to 4,000 hits per month on our recruiting site, and we're able to break that down to identify where those candidates are coming from, whether they're going directly to our site or they're coming to us from LinkedIn, Facebook, elsewhere, such as that. So we'll continue to monitor those, but that kind of served as a baseline, because whereas before, we really didn't have any concrete data to be able to give that answer.
Any other questions? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Let's start this.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. What I plan to do is just walk through each one of the Public Utilities divisions real quick, just provide a couple of highlights, and I'd be able to answer any questions during or after the presentation. Just want to thank council and the mayor for their support of the Public Utilities Department in 2017 and over all the years that I've been.
What page are you working off on the programmatic?
Well, the -- trying to work more or less from the programmatic budget. All right. You wanted --
Seventy-five?
Yeah, seventy-five starts the -- I was going to start with, actually, on would be the Water Treatment Division on seventy-nine for the program budget. As everybody's aware, the most recent expansion of the water plant went online in 2015. Based on the city's current growth rate, we should have sufficient capacity at the water treatment plant for the next 20 years. It may change if a large water user comes into the city of Delaware, but we are in real good shape in terms of treatment capacity. As we went through during the CIP process, my only concern is, once again, raw water sources and something that the city should continue to look at over the next several years. The water plant continues to operate and perform as designed. Since 2015, we have not had any permit violations of our EPA regulation requirements. We currently average 4 million gallons a day. Our overall treatment capacity is 7.2, but when the plant expansion did go online, the city had the foresight to make the improvements at the plant where we can add 2 million gallon increments, not increasing the building footprint, just adding additional membrane skids. We do continue to keep our water hardness at the 125 to 135 milligrams per liter standard that we promised during the plant expansion project, which is below the EPA recommendation of 150 milligrams per liter. We also have seen significant decreases in our water quality complaints throughout the city since the new water plant went online. As you'll see in the 2018 budget and what we've seen over the last couple of years, the electric and chemical costs continue to be the major funding expenditure with the new water plant. I do hope that those costs should be leveling out with our current waters -- with our current service level and hopefully with some improved raw water quality in both the Delaware Lake and the Olentangie River. So you can see how those expenditures went out -- went increased from 2017 to 2018 for both electric and chemicals, and it is the goal of the staff to keep those budget numbers in line this year. So we plan to do that. I do want to emphasize that the majority of the equipment at the water plant is five years old or less, but a considerable amount of our manpower and funding in terms of maintenance equipment is spent to maintain that equipment by both preventive maintenance issues and process equipment review from our vendors that supply that equipment. So we do see a little bit of an increase in our maintenance of equipment budget. That's mostly to keep the equipment, the preventive equipment, in line with the equipment and then add additional cartridge filters, which we need to purchase to remove the iron from the groundwater before it goes to the reverse osmosis membranes. We do -- there is no added increase in staff. We do have one plant manager, a class four operators. Then we have seven plant operators, anywhere in range from class three to class one, and they do operate the plant 24/7. The next division I would like to just talk a few minutes about is our Water Distribution Division. That would be on page 82. Once again, as the council is aware, we did implement an AMI system several years ago, and I am happy to say that we are down to less than 100 installs that are needed to complete that project out of almost 12,750 accounts. No opt-outs, and for the most part, everybody has been pleased with it. We do see the benefits of that program with the monthly readings, no estimating, and what we continually need to get comments about is that staff provides daily residential leak notifications. We review the AMI data each morning, and then if we have seen any excessive use from any of the residents, we provide them with an email or a phone call, letting them know that they may have a leak within their system. We also are encouraging residents to, once again, to sign up for the online customer web portal through notifications so that they can check that themselves without relying on the city to provide that information to them. We do have over 190 miles of water main, 1,800 fire hydrants. We have seen a decrease in our water main failures over the last 10 years, in good parts of the funding that the city has provided so that we can go out and replace these water mains as they age and where we see more than two or three failures per water line. We currently average six water main failures per 100 miles of water pipe. The national average is anywhere from 20 to 25 failures per 100 miles of water pipes. So we do continue to make advances at that so we don't have any of the interruptions in service that other communities may have. One thing I do want to touch about with our AMI system and the three water meters that we do have currently in that position, we are looking at their roles being expanded to include other activities, such as valve replacement, valve maintenance, backflow inspections and servicing. One major activity that still consumes about a week of work for the water meters is our shut-off activities. We do typically average 300 shut-offs per month. That does reduce as residents come in to pay their bills once they realize they're delinquent, but it still takes them four to five days to perform those shut-off activities. And then as residents pay their delinquent water bills, we do have to go out there and turn those water meters back on. So that is a service that does take quite a bit of time for our meter reading. One thing we're looking at with our 2018 budget is contracting out our oops locate -- utility locates. I believe Bill probably touched on that, but his department also spends a lot of time with that. We have two staff members that spend 30 to 40 hours a week, per the two of them doing oops locating due to all the growth in the city. So it'd be a lot more cost-efficient if we locate -- if we contract out those utility locating services at a cost of approximately $20,000 for each of the water and sanitary sewer part of the project, and that is in our 2018 budget. One other initiative that I wanted to start in 2018, since the AMI system that is now in place, is the replacement of large water meters for most of our industrial water users. Those -- the majority of those water meters are anywhere from four to eight inches in size and have been in service for 20 to 25 years. And as everybody's aware, water meters do slow down as they age, and these are pretty large water users that we want to get the water meters replaced so that we can recoup the consumption that's actually used at those businesses and industries. Wastewater treatment, which is on page 86. Wastewater treatment is really my favorite part of the utility part of it. It's where I got my start. So the last plant expansion was in 2007. We averaged the -- our design is 10 million gallons a day. We average, on a typical day, 5 million gallons a day. So at the current growth rate, I would expect to -- we have about 15 years' worth of capacity at the wastewater plant. We've had one -- we had one permit violation in 2017, and that was a copper violation for a daily violation. Once we determined the source, we were able to correct the issue, and that was the one exceedance of our permit violation. When it comes to capacity at the wastewater plant, one thing we continue to work on is inflow and infiltration. With the two large storm events that we saw in June of 16 and then just recently, a couple weeks ago, we had peak hourly flows of 35 million gallons at the wastewater plant. Like I said, in a hydrologically, our plan is permitted for 20 million gallons on a peak average flow, and we are up at 35 million gallons at every tank in service to make sure that we did everything we could to keep the water at the wastewater plant and not within the system. We actually treated a total of 19 million gallons on both that Saturday and Sunday during that storm event when our design capacity is 10 million gallons. So we continue to work on inflow and infiltration issues within the collection system, and we want to shave those peaks. We got the infiltration part of it more or less under control. It's the inflow where you see the direct connection from the stormwater system into our sanitary sewer system, and those are mostly from house laterals that are getting right into our main trunk lines. The majority of our equipment at the wastewater plant is in the 10- to 30-year-old range, so we do spend quite a bit of funding and staff time on equipment repair and replacement. Majority of that equipment is in a corrosive environment with the sewer water, so we are looking at making a slight increase in our funding for that. Most of the -- the majority of our equipment replacement funding is though in our CIP funding. One project I do want to highlight is that in early 2017, we put our new aeration system in -- online, and we have seen a significant decrease in our electric cost savings. We are saving approximately $7,000 per month with our new system. I know it seems like -- it'll seem like a long time, but I anticipate that return on investment at about 20-year -- at -- so I'm sorry, at 12 years, but the aeration system will last 25 to 30 years. So after 12 years, I anticipate that our -- thus our current electric savings will have that project paid off and will therefore be in pretty good shape for the next 20 to 25 years with that system. We do have a staff of -- a total staff of nine at the wastewater plant, looking for no increases there. We have four class threes, one class two, three class ones, and one facility maintenance technician. That facility technician spends his time both at the wastewater plant and at the water plant, taking care of the buildings and the grounds when the regular staff can't do that. Next division is wastewater collection. That's on page 89. The goal of the wastewater collection division, most of our staff, a good part of their day is spent out in the system, performing the TV inspection of our sewer collection system and inspection of all the sanitary pipe. Our goal is to TV every foot of pipe in the city of Delaware once every 10 years. We have over 175 miles of sewer lines in the city, and we try -- that's our goal, is 18 miles per year or so to get TV inspected. That information then is used to perform repairs of the system or rehabilitation of the system. Our CCTV equipment, we can videotape that, DVDs, then we can go inspect that and make sure we can repair any line that needs to be repaired. We do also have the capability through our CCTV is actually looking up the laterals of several -- of the homes, and we can provide that information, such as tree roots or any failures to that property owner, so they can take care of that before it becomes a major issue with their home laterals. It is a city policy that home laterals are the property owner's responsibility until the connection to our sewer main. We have seen a slight increase in the number of sewer backups in the last couple of years. Majority of that is because of tree roots. We do have a pretty extensive system where, once a year, we provide a contractor with a X number of miles of system that needs to be treated for roots. He provides a chemical root treatment of those sections of pipe that need to be treated for roots. That's at about a cost of $20,000 a year, and we do plan to continue that and hopefully maybe even increase that over the next couple of years. Like I said, our professional services are increasing somewhat over the next -- over from 2017 to 2018, and it's basically for the treatment of those tree roots where we need to get out there and do a little bit more, especially the older sections of town where we have more of the mature trees that are -- roots are getting into our sewer system. We also see a slight increase in our maintenance of equipment. Majority of that is for pump station repairs. We do have 13 lift stations and several more that will be implemented from housing developments in the next couple of years. We have a couple of old ones that we want to get more up to state, where we do have see some sewer backup issues, especially when we have power outages. So we want to get that -- those pump stations upgraded. The last division that I want to talk about is our Storm Sewer Division. The city council is aware we enacted a stormwater fee of $2.50 a month per residential unit back in 2000 -- at the end of 2001, started 2002. So therefore, we are able to provide improvements to our stormwater system. We also CCTV our stormwater systems, not quite as extensively as our sanitary sewer, but we do try to CCTV approximately four miles of stormwater main per year. We have a -- currently have 140 miles of stormwater system in our city. We also have increased the linear feet of stormwater pipe and ditches that are cleaned each year. We've increased that by several thousand feet over the last couple of years, just because of the growth of cattails and trees and everything in our ditches that we need to maintain a little bit better than we had been. We have seen a reduction in the number of standing water complaints and basement flooding throughout the year. We do -- we did have a couple, or more than a couple. We had several during the last couple of stormwater events, but those were rain events in excess of four and a half inches, and that's to be expected a little bit within our system. But we do try to respond as quickly as possible to anybody that does have water in their basement. We are looking at increasing our professional services budget from 2017 to 2018. A lot of that is for MS4 engineering services. We have to beef that up a little bit. We are expecting to have an audit of our annual report, and there are some areas that we'll need to beef up, and a lot of that is just with public education and getting the word out about our MS4 system and what people can do to help us with the conveyance of stormwater to the Olentangie River. We also want to -- We also want to purchase or rent, we're looking at maybe purchasing in the next couple of years, but we want to rent some CCTV equipment that we actually can get out into the backyards of where the majority of stormwater lines are. So we can TV those and see if there's any issues with those. We don't currently have that capability. And that's where you see a lot of the standing water complaints is from backyard stormwater lines. So we look at, want to rent some of the transporters that can get to backyards. Between water collection or stormwater collection and stormwater, we have a staff of six people that maintain our entire wastewater collection and stormwater system. And that is currently adequate to provide the current level of service that we do. I'll be more than happy to answer any specific questions you have regarding the utility budget at this time.
I have another question. Now, the program, Matt.
Yeah, I can't say it either.
Page seventy-seven expenditures by division activity. I know this will be easy once you, before you see it. This is the 2017 budgets, 453,000, 2017 actual 700,000. Just, what's the difference there?
From the seventeen to the?
Yeah, to 2017 budget to the 2017 actual.
Oh, it's probably.
It's a jump of 6,500,000.
No. It probably does include some of the CIP projects in there. I'd have to go back and take a look at that.
That looks like a typo.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it looked a little, and it didn't match.
Yeah, that seven, yeah, I don't know why there's that 7,000, that $7 million in the administrative. I'll have to go and look at that again. I thought I caught that. But more likely, it probably. I would have retired, I retired a couple of years ago. But that probably includes some CIP projects that shouldn't have been in that line item. But I will correct that, Jim.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's a big typo.
Just, I had mentioned in my budget message, the fund balance in the water fund. And right now, revenues, expenditures exceed revenues by a few hundred thousand dollars. And so that's drawing down, that's drawing down that fund balance. And it's something that we're going to have to take a look at in terms of the expenses in 2018. Some of that could be attributed to the increased chemicals cost, increased electric cost with the new plant. We've got to get those back into balance. And so I mean, the charge of Brad's successor is to, to address that. Some of that can be addressed through looking at a rate increase. But we also need to go back and just evaluate those costs. Brad did indicate that on the expense side in terms of the water meter, water meter leaders, now they're automated completely, that's a conversation we're going to want to continue to. I think the, the approach, or at least the recommendation of Brad has been that those, those labor units that were being used for water meter reading have been used to get us into the implementation phase. But once the implementation phase is complete, you know, what do you do then? And I think one of the recommendations is there's other work that can be done. That's got to be evaluated against some of these other issues.
Exactly, right.
That's really, I think that came up early on, I think in our discussion. At least, I don't know if you, somebody raised it early on when we were looking at the AMI conversion and labor savings and that kind of thing, so.
I guess I'm not satisfied with the explanation of there's some extra costs, like.
Well.
Can you explain a little bit further?
I think if you, well, I mean, Brad did.
The extra costs for.
I mean, the rate increase because I, we just raised water rates.
We raised, utility rates last, earlier this year, yes, we did. And partly to, we had solid waste increase. I can't remember what the exact increase was. It was like 3, 3%. But this is something that.
Right, we didn't, Dean, we didn't increase water rates since 2012, right? They.
Since 2012.
We, we increased water, but not sewer, is that correct?
In 2017.
Yeah.
We did water, but not sewer.
Right, right.
Well, I think the explanation is, part of it is just the cost of the new plan.
Right, exactly.
Is, is much higher than.
Anticipated.
We anticipated. And some of that is electric, some of that's chemical. I mean, that's.
That's the bulk of it, yeah.
There's also a piece, Lisa, that goes over to the, to the capital side for maintenance of projects.
Right. I mean, and a big part of, we don't, you don't see a lot of large CIP projects in the, over the next couple of years on the water side. And the, knowing full well that we do have, we don't want to keep on continuing to decrease that, that funding. So there are a limited number of water increases, projects. We do show in the CIP, a large project for water capacity in terms of future extension but towards Sawmill Parkway, but those are to be evaluated when and if projects come up for the Sawmill Parkway, Parkway area. So those, those CIP, which contributes to our fund balance in the water side, that could be adjusted based on if we move forward with some of those projects that are in the CIP.
I guess what my question is though, is I'm just not seeing where that cost is being reflected in the actual budget. So like, I'm looking on page forty-six.
Yeah, you really need to go to page forty-eight or, or, well, you're on page forty-six, Lisa, so let's stick, stay there for now.
So.
If you go to fifty-seven, forty, which is transfer water CIP, the bottom of that page.
Okay.
You see how much is being allocated. That's going to the capital improvement program.
To 1.33 million dollars.
That's one area.
But that's not why the fund balance is being drained, right?
You know, but then if you turn, I just wanted to point out that's one area that we might have to look at cutting back on in terms of trying to, to reduce, reduce costs. And then if you look at chemicals, chemicals were thirty-three, thirty-three, page forty-eight.
Forty-eight. You can see on the electric side how chemicals jumped. Well, it doesn't, isn't reflect on this, but prior to 2015, our electric was in the $250,000 range. Now we're up to $450,000.
Right, but you're saying though that we have to raise, raise water rates because electric is costing more. But in 2017, it's 483,000. And in 2018, we're budgeting 450,000.
That, with the goal in mind to keep that, I mean, our, our, our charge at the water plant is to look at alternatives in terms of maybe running the generator at night to get our electric costs down, filling the tanks in different periods. That's something we've been evaluating over the last year or two. So the charge of the staff at the water treatment plant is to keep our budget at 450 in lieu of the 483 that we're actually going to spend in 2017.
Then why was 2015 higher than 2016? I mean.
It just could have been the way that the, a lot of it, Mayor, is with the terms of, but I want to explain during the supplemental is our raw, raw water quality. We have to run more pumps at a higher pressure when we're not having good water qualities. And that's something that we look at versus running the groundwater well field or the surface water. So there's all, there's, there's those factors in place when we have to run the plant at different pressures.
I still can't find though where, if we're talking about water rates increasing, I want to make sure that I understand every detail about why we need to do that because I'm going to have to answer that question when people say, why are you raising water rates? And did you look into alternatives? I can't figure out, I can't find the problem of why we would need to raise them. I mean, I see that the numbers on page forty-six are increasing, the administrative expenses in the water administration, but I can't find any line items that show what that increase is attributed to.
You know, I think the, I'm looking at a 2012 or 2014 actual for electric. And as Brad indicated, that was 200,000, 212,000 dollars. And we're proposing, so it's doubled essentially. Electric is, their cost for electric is, if you look at, right, if you go back to fourteen actual, the 2014 actual, which is in your 2017 budget, is 212,000 dollars for electric.
And then the next year went to 436.
Right.
Right, with the new plan online.
Right, the new plan came online. So that has, so that's an, that was an immediate impact on us was just.
Sixteen that went down and then seventeen that.
Yeah, I mean, it's been fluctuating, but it's still order of magnitude. It's still almost twice where it was as a cost center. And that's, that's one of the reasons.
And some of it is based on our actual pumpage too. I mean, sixteen could have been a down year and how much water we had pumped could have gone up in seventeen. I'd have to pull out those actual consumption records and get that to you.
If we want, we can just go through it. Brad, if you want to just review that where you think the major cost increases are.
The, operationally, it's not, you know, we've, we've already somewhat absorbed the electrical cost increase that we talked about a year or two ago. You know, so operationally, we're not in too bad a situation. The balancing that we need to do is to match up our needs, so to speak, with the expansion of our system. When we look at our capital side of things, we've talked about extending water lines into new areas, into the industrial park. And that along with the incremental costs, obviously, we built the, the waste, the water plant improvement. And two years ago, we started paying back that debt. So we borrowed close to $30 million. Obviously, we knew that. We increased our rates several years ago to help accommodate that. So from a cash flow standpoint, I think our biggest challenge is just looking at making sure that that, the funds available after we pay our operating costs for capital match up with what our capital wants and needs are. From a, from a fund reserve basis, we're in pretty good shape. We have roughly seven, almost eight million dollars in funds. We have a $2 million reserve fund that was created a couple of years ago just to balance out any short-term type of issues that come up, major, major maintenance items that hit us that were unanticipated. So we're in pretty good shape. I think the bigger challenge is just looking at some of the line extensions down the road and how those match up. Operationally, again, other than the, I think, when we did the whole design for the new plant and going to the membrane several years ago, sitting down with all those engineers, we knew our electric costs were going to go up. We assumed an offsetting chemical reduction. I don't think the chemical reduction's been as high as anticipated. The electric costs went up higher. So it, you know, our, our operating costs are a little bit higher. As I said, we pretty much absorbed that. If we're going to look at rate increases in the future, I think it's really going to be tied more so to our ability to expand our system and get out there and build it and they'll come type of situations. From a rate standpoint, we did increase the water rates in 2017. Last time they were increased was in 2012. Our sewer rates haven't been increased since 2012. And the water rate was a 6%. Looking forward down the road, I don't see much more than a two, maybe 3% increase at all unless something substantial happens. Again, we, we kind of play that catch up with inflation type of situation. But, but overall, it's, it's something we want to make sure we monitor. But I think the biggest part of it is just looking at our capital needs.
Your, so your question is still, where's the increase coming from?
Where's the increase?
Pardon?
Yeah, where's the increase? I can't tease that up.
The, the increase in, in, in proposed increase in rates or the increase in expenditures?
Why we're draining down the fund balance leading to needing to discuss a rate increase.
Well, I don't think that's necessarily itself going to be the driver for a rate increase. I think it's going to be more, I mean, our operational costs will go up at least with inflation. And at some point, we either have to look at a scenario where every five years, we raise it 8% or, you know, we raise it one or 2% every other year. If you do look at, on page forty-six at the bottom, that amount going into capital was reduced down in 2017. And it's up, you know, again, it's up to 1.335 million. So that does impact the, the cash flow from that standpoint. But it's not something that isn't manageable. Again, it, it, it takes a focused look at a little bit longer term from the capital standpoint. I think Brad, I know he mentioned there was a couple of projects that were pushed back a little bit, but, you know, I don't know what the general status of our water line, our water system as far as from a maintenance standpoint, if we're behind the curve, meaning we're just deferring a lot of maintenance. I don't believe that to be the case.
I mean, as Dean said, the majority of our, our future projects aren't in the water maintenance side. We're pretty good. We, we, you know, we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars a year on water maintenance projects. The biggest part of them would be on the water capacity side where we would look at future extensions to serve areas that aren't served now. And that, those would be unvaluated on a yearly basis as needed. In terms of, next year, we have a project programmed for a water line extension to loop the new water line for Terra Alta. You know, that, that's basically for water redundancy and water quality. If city staff determines that that's not one of our priorities and that project could be deferred or eliminated. And that's something that'll need to be evaluated in early 2018. Those are the kind of projects that are in there for the CIP now along with approximately a million dollars for future water extensions down to serve Sawmill Parkway area. That may be or may not be used depending on the growth of the city down that way.
I have a feeling you're still.
One, the questions. Tom, your opening letter, page six, you know, just kind of summarizing all things, says water fund projected to be out of balance by 2018. So department's going to look at associated costs. And so I think we want to, want to know, why is it getting out of balance?
Well, I think it's larger, it's, as we were saying, you've got.
So it's electrical and chemical.
Yeah, and you've got.
But they're not actually increasing.
But you've got contributions to the CIP, the water CIP at the bottom of the page, where you've got 1.2 million dollars in 2015.
Forty-six.
Page forty-six, 1.3 million dollars. And that gets back to what kind of capital improvement projects, what kind of CIP projects are being recommended. A lot of it's growth related, some of it's economic development related. We can follow up with a, you know, a more thorough analysis for you in terms of where. And then we just, I think we need to track it going back a little further because right now, you're just looking at this last few years with the new plant. You really need, I mean, there's, it's a kid. As Dean was indicating, there's the operational side, then there's the capital side. The projects we're doing, the maintenance projects we're doing and the capital expansion projects we're doing.
Right, I think as Dean explained, I think we're, you know, we've absorbed the operational side. It's the capital side that we're still, that might cause the fund balance to drop lower.
I mean, I.
Again, in eighteen, let's go back to forty-six, the last three, seventy-five, ten, forty, and fifty-four. You're asking for more in the budget in eighteen than you have actual in seventeen on both ten, forty, and fifty-four. I mean, you jumped fifty-four from 1 million to 1, 1.3 million.
Right. And those are, like, so those are CIP capacity projects.
What we have to do is look at the CIP capacity projects and go through those and determine whether those, some of those need to be cut back.
And, and like Tom said, that the bulk of that is economic development driven. If, you know, we participate in any kind of projects to promote growth in Sawmill Parkway. Like I said, we have a million dollars allocated in the CIP for water line extensions on the capacity side in 2018. We might spend, we had a million dollars budgeted in 2017 also for that and didn't spend any of that because no projects came up for future growth in that area. And that's, we carried it over to 2018.
We did reduce back painting projects.
We eliminated that.
We did that in 2018, cut that back. You have to look at the, I guess, look at this budget in conjunction with the capital budget because that.
On the administrative side, yes.
A lot of what is.
But it seems to me like we're still, if we're transferring from fifteen to eighteen, roughly the same amount from the CIP. roughly the same amount from the CIP, or to the CIP, we're transferring, the numbers haven't changed there.
Where are you, Lisa?
Forty-six. When, two thousand and fifteen, we spent, we actually was one point two million, and in two thousand and eighteen, we have one point three-three-five. They're only looking over, a little over a hundred thousand dollars.
But every year through there, you, you see your spending down your balance.
Right.
So I mean, it isn't like you're seeing, it isn't like it's a huge amount in any one year, it's just a incremental spend-down.
And, and again, you really have to look at over, over a period of time. And when we talk, when we had our CIP discussions, I've got an analysis projecting out five, ten years as far as cash flow. I'm like, quite comfortable, in fact, I'm looking at the summary here, and through two thousand and twenty-one, you know, what our reserve overall fund balance for all the four, five, or six different water funds we have. It'll be close to seven million dollars. The level of capital improvement that we do fluctuates from one year to the next, and sometimes those transfers are a little bit higher, and I try to monitor the, the reserve balances and get it at an acceptable level. I'm quite comfortable with where we're at. Again, in two thousand and eighteen, we're proposing to do three point two million dollars of water capacity improvements. A fair amount of that, seven, eight hundred thousand is debt service, but there's over two million dollars in projects. Our annual capacity fee revenue, just from capacity taps and, and whatnot, is one point two million dollars. So again, we're drawing down, because we're getting projects done, but there's still four point two million dollars seen at fund. So we're in pretty good shape, I think, from that standpoint. What we need to do, and I mentioned this at capital time, is we just need to get a handle on it. I've mentioned this many, many times to Brad, we don't have unlimited ability to extend water lines out there, and we need to be somewhat selective, because there tends to be more, you know, water line extensions that are out there that are potential than what we're actually funding. Operationally, if you looked at our cost, other than the blip with the, the electric and, and, and the, the chemicals with the new plant, our operating cost increases are probably averaging three, four percent or less per year, and, and very manageable. And I don't see that necessarily changing, Brad, in the future. So it's really a, a driver as far as how, and how much maintenance and/or extension of our expansion of our system we want to do.
And to the extent we do less of that, it's not going to be, it's not going to be spending as much.
Right.
It's not hitting that administrative, that transfers as much.
What, what types of expenses are included on the top of page forty-six, where it says administrative expenses? Like, what sorts of things are those?
The three point three million-
Right.
Down below, at the bottom, you'll see the three million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, and it breaks them down.
So like I said, the bulk of that is the fifty-seven, ten, fifty-seven, forty, and the fifty-seven, fifty-four.
Okay, so that number is all-
Is part of that.
There's administrative costs in there, Lisa, but the bulk of it is those transfers to support the maintenance of the system, the expansion of the system, and transfer to the general fund to offset the, the expenses, the general funding curves in supporting utility funds.
You said we weren't adding anybody, correct?
Correct.
But yet wages went up nine point six percent.
And they're part of their contracts with the city.
Well, in this, in this case, it's not so much the contract, it's Brad's retiring next year, so we've got to pay out his earned time.
Oh, so it's your fault?
Yeah. I'll take it.
In the administration function of this, we break down our water operation into treatment plant, try to isolate those costs, and the distribution system is the underground crews dealing with the pipes out in the field. Administratively, we have some positions funded, Brad, Perry, the administrative assistants-
VAS technician and water coordinator.
Yeah, those are some of the positions, aren't really attributable directly to the treatment process and/or the distribution, so we put it under this category.
Sure.
And it's between water and sewer administration.
I just really don't want to look at raising water rates unless we absolutely-
Right, and that's-
That's our goal, too.
Nor do we, and I think if the charge is figure out a way to avoid a rate increase in eighteen, then that's, we'll have to take a look at.
What are these refunds? Just curious.
Those are typically, if people were, water rates, or water bills, if they were overcharged or something like that, so.
Yeah, it's, it's reimbursed. In fact, we talked about one today, somebody, there was a mistake made when a, a water meter was installed several years ago, it had a one-inch connector onto it-
Instead of a three, four-inch, so it read wrong.
But the residents been overbilled, and potentially, they're going to get over a thousand dollars back from overbilled charges.
Okay.
And that was part of the thing that we call with the AMI system, so, so it could have been, it could have gone on for a couple more years.
So part of this, or the CIP is some water line expansions for Sawmill Parkway that came and called?
Yes. We, we call it sewer, or water and sewer line oversizing.
What's the value of that?
I think it's, I think it's million on water and seven hundred and fifty on sewer.
If you, if you look on page one eighteen of the line item budgets in the back of the line item, not that, not program, but it's in the miscellaneous funds back there, not an operation. That's the, the water capacity fee projects. So we've got the, the millionaire, I think, is for Sawmill, but we also have four hundred and fifty thousand for Glen Road and, and six hundred and fifty thousand for the Old and Tangi Avenue River Crossing. So just in the water fund alone, we've got over two million dollars in water line extensions. And you can see how that fluctuates. In two thousand and sixteen, there were hardly any. And, and some of it just depends on the timing of when the improvements can be made and should be made.
Then it might be that Glen Road is not going to be ready in two thousand and eighteen.
No, that was, that was planned, if Glen Road is, is extended to the north, the water line would follow it.
But if you're looking at the, that page at the bottom, you see the, the unencumbered fund balance projected to be four point two million dollars. Getting that balance between how much of our resources coming in on, on the expend, extension standpoint, we try to target our, our capacity fees to be able to fund that. And, you know, one point two, it's, you know, that fluctuates up and down with our residential growth primarily. We did create, I do have a, a reserve fund, if you look on that, just the page before that, one seventeen. So we have a two million dollar reserve fund sitting there just to deal with potential unforeseen issues in our utility, our water utility. Put that place a couple of years ago, and I want to kind of keep that there and get a little bit more, you know, as far as the balances in the, these capital funds and in the operating fund, and get them where they really need to be. Our operating fund balance doesn't really need to be more than twenty-five percent of annual cost. And, you know, our capital funds, even though there's balances there, there's some things in the out-years that we perhaps know about, but you'd really have to look at that over a long period of time. Bottom line is, are we generating enough money from our user charges, our monthly utility fees, to cover our maintenance costs? And we do. And in fact, we use some of that to also cover and buffer some of our expansion costs, and we've done that over the last several years.
But if you're charged, Lisa, and council's is, look for ways to avoid any kind of an increase and that sort. I mean, we literally try, we'll be focused on that. And some of that gets back, you're going to hear from Sean here in a couple of minutes, and he's going to talk about investing in line extensions and the amount of money you need to put into the ground to make sites shovel-ready. And that's the, you know, as, as tech, you know, capacity expansion projects, that's the, that's kind of a tug at where we are with some of this stuff.
I just thought that the AMI system was supposed to make us so much more efficient and save money and free up all this time, and-
Well, it will be, it's freeing up time, and I, in terms of, we are getting expenses on a, a monthly basis, and we are, have accurate readings. A lot of it was just to provide a better service level for our residents, so that they're not complaining about estimated bills every month, and, and, or, or paying, overpaying because they have a toilet leak that they're not aware of and stuff like that. So we felt it was prudent to provide an increased level of service at the cost of the AMI did. It does, you know, it will take several years for us to recoup that money. It's not going to be, we're not going to get one point six million all back in one year. It's going to be over a number of years, as we see those monthly utility bills pay on an accurate basis instead of an estimated one number. And also with the new meters that were installed, you do get a next, an increase in, in revenue from that. And, and as I spoke about during the meeting here tonight, we're also looking at increasing, or, changing out the large water meters in a lot of our industrial users that, that, that have slowed down over the last couple of years. But I, I think, I mean, that AMI system was, a lot of it was for an improved level of service that maybe can't always be quantified in dollars and cents.
But I think we're going to be, we're going to need to look on the cost side, and that's what I indicated in the message, in terms of, once the AMI project is completed, implemented, because right now, we're using our resources, our meter reader resources, our labor, to assist with that project. Once that project is complete, then the question is, you've got now available labor units to, well, for other projects, or do you evaluate, do we, do we need those, you know, do we need those positions? Do we need two full-time positions versus one full-time position? And that's, you know, that's something that we have to evaluate.
Exactly.
But we can't do that until we, until the project is complete, and we know exactly what the, what the requirements are.
Right, exactly.
So.
So you satisfied, or, I mean, you're not thrilled, I can tell, but I just don't, I don't want to raise water rates.
I don't think any of us do.
Any of us do, but on the same note, I don't want to decrease our expansive capacity, because that Sawmill corridor down there is important for economic development. If we, utilities end, we can't develop it.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Didn't mean to blow you like that.
No, no problem.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. How are you? Make sure I want to follow Brad again. Can we change it next year? Just kidding. Just joking, Brad. My line item, the economic development line item budget starts on page eight, the programmatic budget's on page eleven, I believe. Two thousand and seventeen is the, marks the, the fourth year of our economic development plan that we kicked off in two thousand and fourteen. So next year, two thousand and eighteen will be the fifth year of what I think we all foresaw as being a five-year plan anyhow, which really actually is a good thing, because we're starting the comprehensive plan review process next year, and updating that. So redoing the economic development plan in conjunction with the comprehensive plan is a very good thing, and actually will help me a lot as I was doing that. I, I did this plan when I got here in two thousand and thirteen, I started writing, which obviously, we weren't in the midst of doing something like that, so it took lots of extra research to come up with information and whatnot to actually support and, and push the plan along. So this year, consultants will be providing a lot of stuff, and we can build off of that. So I'm excited about that. The one thing I have to say about two thousand and seventeen statistically is, this was a very different year than, than previous years. This is the, a year that I, I really truly started seeing a shift based on our economic development plan in the way that we're attracting jobs to the city of Delaware. And this is a good thing. You know, our traction leads, business attraction leads, and we're up, and projects, we're up thirty-six, or leads are up thirty-six percent, and our projects were up thirty-eight percent this year. We had two hundred and twenty-seven non-business retention expansion leads, one hundred and seventy-five non-business retention expansion projects. If you add on the sixty-two business retention expansion projects, I think we had, we had two hundred and thirty-seven projects for the year for two, a staff of two. So this was a, a very difficult year in terms of capacity, trying to keep up with the, the amount of project flow that was coming through, the amount of leads and, and those conversions into projects. Here's where it really gets interesting, though. This is where it really started shifting. Our white-collar leads and projects, I mean, tech, office, business services, medical, were growing, and they're now twenty percent, twenty-six percent of our lead generation now. So twenty-three percent in comparison are industrial. So actually, those white-collar job lead generations are over, surpassing our industrial lead generation. And that's different, we've not been there before. But if we go back to the citizen survey, it's what people wanted. If you look at what, what our current resident labor force is doing, this is helping us to turn around the taillights in the morning, making sure they're staying here. I'll get to that in a moment. Fifty-one percent of our leads are still retail, restaurant, consumer service-based businesses. That's actually not that unusual. We treat those just like anything else. We have to work on it, just like we would any other project. Thirty percent of projects, so this is where it's difficult, too, because, and again, but I'll tell you, these office-type jobs are harder to turn, to convert from a lead into a project and then to an completion, right? They take more effort, because they're asset resource-driven, and resources being labor force, that's included in that. So while our, our leads were up twenty-six percent, up to twenty-six percent on those types of jobs, thirty percent of our projects were industrial in nature, but twenty-three percent of our projects were white-collar type projects. So went from twenty-six percent leads to twenty-three percent on projects. So you lost a little conversion there. Forty-six percent of projects are retail, or business services of some, or consumer services of some sort. In comparison, if you want to see how, you know, our region deals with projects, forty-two percent of Columbus twenty-twenty's projects are office-type projects, technology, business services, those sorts of things. So we're making progress, and we're not up to where the region is, I think, in terms of, of that yet. But we are making definite progress, and, and that's something to be proud of, because that's achieving the goals of our economic development plan. Sixty-one percent, however, sixty-one percent of our leads this year were actually generated by us. So that is significantly higher than previous years. We're, we are not relying as heavily on our supporting regional and state partners to bring businesses to us. We're actually getting them through other means, through marketing, through relationships, through visits, getting them to come here and, and visit Delaware. That conversion, though, and change to being more white-collar, office-type attractions, work has, has changed the way that people are coming and going for their jobs. When I got here, you know, we were well over eighty percent of our labor force commuting outside of the city limits for work every day, and most of us were actually leaving the county for work. We've increased, we've improved that by three point three percent since two thousand and thirteen. So now, three point three percent, actually, that's a two thousand and fifteen number, because we don't have sixteen and seventeen yet. Bureau Labor Statistics hasn't released those numbers. But as of two thousand and fifteen, so probably two years, three point three percent more people are staying in the city limits of living and working in the city. That's a pretty significant increase in a couple of years, in, in my opinion. The addition of, of Kelsey's position has been, are you looking at me funny? Say, oh, okay, sorry. Kel, the addition of Kelsey's position has been instrumental, and, and not only helping me in terms of marketing communication, helping that business attraction, but she's also managing the, the day-to-day activities of our business retention expansion efforts. So last year, we had ninety-nine business retention expansion visits with companies. Keep in mind, we have about forty-five core industry employers, we hit all of those every year, and then we hit additional- and then we hit additional beyond that. We'll be well over 100, more than likely 110, I'm projecting by the end of this year on those visits. So we're keeping very active on that, and that, too, is converting into work and jobs. So for project completions, all that boiling down the funnel, we've had 21 non-business retention expansion project completions, and seven business retention expansion project completions this year, resulting in about 160 new jobs in 2000, well, that's what we're at right now, and we'll have some additional by the end of the year, but right now, as of now, 160 new jobs. And about 30% of those jobs are actually your office, white-collar type jobs, which, again, is a significant change over previous years, you would have seen that percentage much lower. We have a 1.85% job growth rate in the city, in comparison, the US is 1.59%. So again, it's an indicator that our economic development efforts are moving the needle. The median household income is increasing at about 3% per year. So again, as we continue to increase the white-collar jobs here, and keep the money flowing throughout the community improves the whole entire economic outlook of the community and is increasing people's earning income, earning abilities. Another great indicator of our success is our downtown first-floor occupancy rate still remains, it's at 94.46 at the, right now, as of today. So hovers around 95%, and given one time, I think if we fill that Brooklyn Heights building, it'll be much higher, considering the square footage of that building, but we'll get there eventually. Another great indicator is the fact that all but Glenwood Commons, Delaware Square, Delaware Shopping Center, all of our shopping centers are 100%, except for those three, and those are generally over 75% at capacity on leases. So that's a very healthy retail economy. So we have, you know, every year is a foundation for the next year in economic development. And I say it's a long-distance run, not a sprint. So next year, we'll continue this work, we'll continue the site preparation work around the city with a concentration on that Solomon Parkway area, and I won't get back into all that, because I did that during the CIP, so I know these guys prefer not to go in that again. But we have completed our infrastructure analysis now, so we can intelligently sit down with a developer, which we have on multiple occasions, we're up to eight major developer visits this year, trying to get people interested in securing land here and actually partnering with us to prepare these sites even further for end-users, job creators. But that, those, that information's really helped us to have those kind of conversations. However, they've all said the same thing, well, we understand all that, the infrastructure, we're glad you did that much research, but show us what you really want to do with it. So we're starting next year, we're actually doing the work right now, Dave and I have been working with a planner to come up with some concepts for some particular piece of land, and I won't say in a public meeting which piece of land it is, but we're coming up with a concept for the specialty aftermarket equipment park. What does that look like, and what types of businesses do we envision going in there? And I think, again, that goes along the lines of our economic development plan, what we all want to see here, more RMD-type jobs than straight-up production jobs for your engineers and whatnot. I think it's interesting, we had a site visit recently with a very high-end technology company that hires a lot of engineers, and they were looking at the labor statistics for the city as well as the county, and they were very, very pleased with the number of engineers living in our communities, and it made them much more excited about us than I think they thought they would be when they came here. But this plan will help us to go back to those developers and say, hey, you know, we've put more thought into this, this is where we want to go, can you partner with us on that and get us there? We also recently joined the Special Equipment Manufacturers Association, so we are members of SEMA now. I think Kent saw the keynote speaker on Friday, who was talking about autonomous cars and technology and cars and whatnot, he was a technology specialist for the automotive manufacturing industry. He also was a member of SEMA, I saw his logo up there. A lot of the communities in what's called the Smart City Corridor 33 through Columbus and Dublin and into Marysville are concentrating on OEM, smart technology. There's an opportunity there, it's being missed, and that's your aftermarket. There's companies that have to provide very heavy support towards smart cars, autonomous cars, electric cars, and a lot of communities are ignoring those right now, but with a company like JEGS here, again, we already have the relationships to get to those people and drive those jobs and investment here. We continue our work in shifting our focus from blue-collar to white-collar jobs. Delaware does, has been a tremendous program this year that we will continue into the new year, and hoping we make that a monthly function, not an every other month, but we've had attendance anywhere from 40 to 75 people at every single one of those, and met some fantastic outstanding entrepreneurs in our communities, and these are people who want co-hatch-type facilities, want our entrepreneur center, and they'll come here and be working in our downtown area and our community every day, once we have those. Mentioned the entrepreneur center, we're in final negotiations with High Westland on that agreement with them, so that we can move forward with construction hopefully next year on that facility. That also is leading us to conversations with a very exciting fintech project. Jackie's going to ask me what fintech is, sorry. Fintech is financial technology, and you'll start hearing that term more and more. We actually had a fintech company locate in our downtown here recently, Substratum, and you'll see an article from Kelsey coming out here soon about how that company came here and what they do and whatnot. But this would be, you know, just probably 25, 30, very, very six-figure income jobs in our downtown. So when you look at those numbers, that's equivalent to one manufacturing operation, right? 20, 25, 30. So we're also working on our East Side Historic District, developing a plan that will then become part of the comprehensive plan. Now that downtown is successful, how do we take that across the river, program the river, and move it into a very important part of our community? And have more of that mixed-use development that'll create, again, more of those white-collar jobs. And mixed-use developments are incredibly important. We are not a community, we don't have an interstate here, except 23 is the closest that we have, right? Thing that we have to that. However, with that being said, we have to be creative in how we do office. And mixed-use development is how a community like ours does office. Mixing it with retail and residential high-end allows us to attract the millennials and the generation after that, and gives them that college campus-type feel that they're used to, so they can work, live, and play in the same area. We're working, we're going to be working with the county on the 23 corridor study they're completing, and we'll continue working on second, third-floor renovations in our downtown to continue, again, to drive those office jobs into our downtown. We're also completing business park signage standards and plans, Dave and I have been working very diligently on that so that we can have a consistent look in our business parks, look and feel with our signage, and how we're calling different, the nomenclature, what we're calling different parts of it. But that's, that's very exciting, and will allow us to ultimately get rid of the nice industrial park sign from the 1970s, I guess it's 1960s, right, out on London Road. And I already mentioned the ED plan that we'll be doing with our comp plans. So that's all I have for you, otherwise, it's a level budget, actually, a little bit less than last year, so, because we had some programs rolling off the books this year that were budgeted in the previous year. With that being said, do you have any questions? I didn't put anybody asleep, kind of, kind of oscillate, but, just kidding.
I have a couple of questions, Sean, and I'm looking at your matrix on page 11 and whatever it's called in the back here. Just need some clarification and just walk me through this, and some of these questions I'm going to ask, I don't expect you to have the answers tonight, but Tom, if you could jot these down and get back to us on this. Just so I understand your matrix, obviously, 2018, that's your guestimate, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So if I'm looking at this 2017 correctly, it says new payroll, roughly $9.5 million, and then jobs created were 248, so technically, if I, I should be able to take 248 into 9.5 million and get an average wage, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because if you do that, I mean, that shows wages are down 22% over 2015. We were from about a $50,000 average, of wages is down to $38,000, let's try and get your pain in white. I mean, we keep talking about white-collar jobs, and that certainly isn't some white-collar, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that at all?
It's probably just a multiplication problem.
The numbers are here, 9.5 million in new payroll divided by?
I really actually, when I build that, it's, it's a, I build it as a percentage increase over previous year. So I only increased projections by 3% this year instead of previous 10% I've been working with. So I don't think it increased the wages at the same rate that it should have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of the, of the $9.5 million roughly, can we find out what actual tax revenues brought to the city with that money? Obviously, a lot of those people.
An estimate.
Yeah, an estimate. I mean, a lot of people don't live in the city, a lot of people, you know, are paying a partial, I'd like to know what that, what that would be of that payroll.
I'm not sure what this new payroll represents, but if it's jobs in the city, it should all be payable at the city, so whether they live here or not.
That would be income tax, though.
Assuming that's what it is, jobs, yeah. I mean, they might, they contract people or whatever, I don't know, I don't know where the number, I guess my shot is better.
Where you live, I understand that. What I'm trying, what I guess what I'm trying to get is, none of that would be part of this, of the JED out there? We're not?
Correct, no, when you look at my, the goals I set for myself in the budget each year, or my department, rather, those don't include the JED work or any, anything outside the city limits, actually, so. Our annual report each year does break that down into what that, how that, what that looks like in terms of payroll or income taxes. And we do track that each year in our annual report.
So that, so, I mean, I'm just trying to do this respectfully as I can, so that $9.5 million is really just a dart that's thrown, that's not real, that's not a real number.
Yeah, I mean, really, what you see in our ED plan and our annual reports are better known, the budgets, more of a, yeah, it's a really more of a dark projection.
How can we get an actual number of new payroll created from these jobs?
Oh, well, I do get that on a real basis each year, yes.
Well, now I'm confused, why isn't that number what?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I thought you meant the projection numbers. Yeah, yeah, previous, yeah, previous numbers, real numbers from the previous year, those do come out of our annual report each year.
Yes, so, so that's saying the average wage of these new jobs is $30,000. And the average wage in 2015 from new jobs was $50,000. I'm trying to see why, for bringing in white-collar jobs, why, why they're 22% less?
It depends what category, what sector those jobs were created in, and those are broken down in our annual report, but there's no way of breaking them down in there, but one year, you might have more retail jobs built than you would white-collar jobs, it fluctuates each year.
Okay. Then the last question is, with the, with the new buildings or expansions, there was three in 2017, and retained or expanded businesses, there were 11, so of those 14 businesses, do we know what percent of those businesses had abatements?
I mean, pretty much any expansion that we've done that would be considered an industrial or office expansion has an abatement, yes.
So you'd say 100% of those, and there's an abatement of some sort in all those? That's all the questions I have.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Line item budgets, page eight, 5230, professional services is down about 46%. What, what types of things are you not doing there or decreasing?
One of the major items that came out this year was the planner that's working on the special aftermarket concept, and also, we're hoping to be able to start the East Side plan this year. Now, I don't think that's actually going to get done this year, so that would carry over into the next year, but that's not actually in here. That was $25,000 alone. Yeah.
Any other questions, Sean?
I know there were some questions that Lisa had, just philosophically on Saturday regarding jobs, I know you had a chance to listen to the, to the tape, or to the audio, the council maybe kind of might be better.
Well, and that's one of the reasons I kind of framed my presentation here a little differently than I think I originally expected to, to really kind of hit on that, and I don't know, hopefully I did. If you have any other questions, please, please let me know, but we are really trying to shift that focus, I think. The last couple of years that Councilman Jones is referencing in the report there, we didn't quite see that shift as much, and I think this year, we're really starting to see that take hold. But you also have to consider your typical office projects going to have fewer jobs connected to it than a typical industrial project. So, you know, initially, you know, the payrolls for those projects won't be in balance. You could have an industrial project that year that's going to have a higher payroll than a white-collar project, simply because of sheer numbers, right? Now, if you get like a fintech where everybody's earning six-figure incomes, yeah, you could have a 50-employee shop making the same exact thing as a 20-employee shop, but, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. What? That's it? All right, no, no, I actually, I do want to go over a few things we'll do in 2018. As you started to hear Saturday, we were asked to, we're working with level-funded budgets, so what you don't see in there, there was a request for a permanent part-time position in community affairs this year that isn't in your budget. Well, it's, there isn't one, it's the city manager.
On page four of the line item.
Yeah.
And then the.
Right.
Programmatic budget.
Right.
Page three.
Okay.
So anyway, level-funded, so what you won't see in there is the request that was made for a permanent part-time position in community affairs. That being said, looking ahead to over the next 12 months, we'll undertake projects that will involve every city department and touch and impact every one of our residents in some way. This will include some major citywide communication activities dealing with transportation, and with Dave and the planning department, the comprehensive plan update. We will track and oversee social media and blogging, the now numbers more than 12 accounts. We hope to attract about 1,000 more Facebook followers, about 500 more Twitter followers. We'll manage more than 270 website pages, we'll produce four quarterly newsletters with a combined print run of more than 50,000. We'll schedule and produce 52 radio programs, including a partnership with Sakata Japan. We'll write content for 12 e-newsletters, we'll manage, we'll message with more than 5,000 neighborhood-specific Nextdoor users. We'll undertake a fireworks fundraising effort that is nearing a quarter of a million dollars raised since 2010. We'll respond to about 200 meeting requests usually within 24 hours. And we'll ensure that more than 30 special events, some with new DORA components, are safe and successful, and will lead a ninth Citizens Academy class over a five-month period. So it's going to be another busy year. Questions? I still am on Sunday morning on the radio with Darren Shulman, he had 9:30, the rebroadcast.
He's live on Friday.
Oh, we're live. No, no, it was, that was a former program director that was, came in and decided that to move things around, and there were some, they actually got some calls and people wanted to bring us back, so we're back live on Fridays at 9:30 to 10:00.
Sean, did you make a phone call?
No. No. No, but there might have been some Schulmans and Yocums that made phone calls.
Public demand.
That's right, it would, you know, that's right, that's right. So.
Does your bonus call up now that you're in prime time again?
Well, that'll. That's right, uh, we have contracts coming up, right? Negotiations?
Right.
It's still zero, but it's a lot of fun. Uh, we, we do have a lot of fun with it and, uh, it's a great opportunity for the city, um, not only to talk about, um, city programs, but as I've, um, said to Tom many times, it's a, a wonderful way for us to share time with some nonprofits and other people in the community that don't have access to the marketing or advertising dollars to get their message out and, uh, the city can assess with, assist with that, so that's a nice, nice thing for the city to be able to do. Yeah, yeah, we have fun with it.
Questions?
You want to talk about, sure. Uh, one of the other things, uh, we'll do in two thousand and eighteen, and you saw Tom, in Tom's message, is, um, we hope to unveil a civic engagement tool, um, that is, uh, strategic in, um, in, in how it engages, in how residents can engage with the city and how, um, the city can engage with residents, and also strategic in that it's, can be tailored for specific city projects, um, and, and operated by that, a team that's overseeing that project.
So we hope to launch that, it's kind of coincidental, but it will be part of the civic engagement piece that land use, the update of the comp plan will allow us to do, but we also plan to use it for transportation projects, for parks projects, um, the police department may have use for it, but it's increasingly a, a tool, a common tool that the communities are using to provide a more, uh, kind of, I don't know, say balanced dialogue with the residents, but it's not, unlike Facebook, which is ongoing, you can't really monitor, uh, this is a more structured way, I guess, is that, am I putting it right way, the right way?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, um, you can monitor Facebook, um, you can monitor all of our social media, um, this is a little more, um, it, it's more project-specific in how it can be used, and therefore the, uh, the conversation is, is more tailored to that project. And, um, there's, it's, it's not just the dialogue that's, that are components of it, it can be used in other ways.
And how are you going to get this information out to engage other people? I mean, that, that through Facebook, how are you going to get it out?
Say, if, if we do, do end up contracting for this, oh, we would cross-promote it. We would, we would promote it in all of these ways, any of these ways, I just, yeah, sure, we would, you know, we would use all of our earned media, we would use our own media, um, we would do all of that and, you know, say, hey, you know, go, go look here, this is, this is a, you know, a whatever, um, for this project and, and promote it that way.
I mean, one of the things Lee mentioned earlier, but in terms of the position, we had talked about, Lee and I, adding some capacity kind of in that digital communications front right now, and that's just exploding. And right now, one person, I mean, Lee is a one person, it's pretty much a one-person operation, she gets a lot of assistance from Kelsey, from other departments, but when it comes to monitoring the traffic coming in and what's going out, it's, it's, it's pretty much Lee. So, um, to the, at some point, if there's, there's some capacity financially, that's an area where I think we could benefit, um, just because, you know, website update, all of those different things.
Mm-hmm.
Take time.
Right.
There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on to that website and, um, you know, that's just one, one example of where it could be helpful.
It, exactly, right. It would be nice to have some built-in redundancy that we, we don't really have. Um, you know, we, um, if I'm not there, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm passing off to somebody else and, uh, it's, it's worked, um, but, um, it, it will work until it doesn't. And, uh, you know, we don't, we don't want that, um, but, you know, we'll, we'll work with what we have.
We did talk about doing more Facebook Live events, that's a pretty more common way of, of reaching residents. I mean, that's like.
Just improving the analytics for Facebook, of working with the, the Facebook algorithm so that it's actually showing up in people's news feeds, because if people aren't interacting on the page.
Right.
Then it's not.
Right.
Showing up. And then just maybe using it as an educational opportunity too, like you do so much with the Citizens Academy, but putting those little educational nuggets on the Facebook page or.
Yeah.
Just doing little gamey-type things to get people interacting and clicking and using Facebook Live. I think as council members, we could all take turns also going live on Facebook with.
Right.
Uh, you know, just to increase that.
I, I think that, I think that we.
Well, but it, it is an opportunity to get yelled at, but it's also an opportunity to let people know.
It's an opportunity.
What we're doing and to engage.
Right, right. I, I, I think that, uh, we do, we do, uh, you know, where we've come from the last twelve years, um, is night and day, and I think we do a good job, um, we could do a lot, we can do better, and we can always do better, but, um, I kind of feel like we're, we're touching, um, all of the areas that we should be as far as our media platforms, um, but we can do more with all of those. Um, it's just the capacity, some of it's a capacity issue, um, so.
Anything else, Lee? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing, that it was an honor to be here for Brad Stanton's last budget presentation. Brad, it's been great working with you.[993.21][993.23](applause). I mean that, so it's great to work with you, Brad. Congratulations.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Okay. Let's stretch this out here. I got a kid in there.
It's a five-minute break.
Do you want to keep going?
No, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Are you sure you don't want to get nervous?
Next, we have IT. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have Dean. Wait, 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 what do we have?
I can't.
I do. Just kidding. Just kidding. Good evening.
Hi. Mayor Riggle, council members, and Mr. Holman and all the staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and discuss the IT budget. My name's Jeff Koloski. I'm the IT, or I'm the IT project coordinator. And my right here is Kendra Mallon. She's our network administrator. And with steel line from Marshall, we are IT. We've had just a short opportunity to look at the budget here in the last couple of weeks. So we're in a slight disadvantage, but we'll do our best to, you know, go over some of the current projects and things that we're doing. One of the things that we're currently working on, I think everybody's pretty aware of, is that the Internet service provider has been selected for the City Hall side. We have one that's already operational, which is on the Justice Center side. And the departments that are currently running on that are the Police Prosecutor's Office, Public Works in the Airport. We are in the process of programming the hardware. We have the hardware in-house and programming it. And as soon as that is done, then we'll start moving the rest of the departments over to that Internet connection. The last we'll move over will be Fire. They come in through a special connection, and we'll move them through into the new equipment and onto the new, new Internet. We began the Core Switch project, and in 2017, it was funded out of the CIP. And we have all the equipment in-house currently, and we are expecting to begin installing that equipment in 2018. Hopefully, it will start in January. All of the equipment needs programmed, so we'll be working on that with some outside vendors that we had initially engaged to do this work. So we'll be taking care of that. We're going to be also in 2018 looking at the virtual servers and assessing our current status for computing. We're going to be looking at how we're going to break that up and purchase new, new equipment, and we'll place the actual servers. We are currently working with, we have a location at Co-Logics that we have our current Internet connection, and we are placing backup equipment at that location to get it off-site and to get it away from our two current locations, which are very close together. For '18, we're going to be obviously working on the Parks and Natural Resources building and the Fire, New Fire Station 304. Like we did for Fire Station 303, we manage the network infrastructure and, and all the technology installation for that facility. So we'll be doing the same thing for these two facilities, separate of the current general contractor. We're currently working on, there's been a request to look at the Council chambers video that we're currently using right now, and that project is underway. We've engaged a outside vendor to take a look and give us some, some answers on some equipment. I'm also doing an in-house design for this, and we should hopefully, we've pretty started the process of making some purchases to support the new equipment, and we'll be continuing that in '18, making that happen. We're working with PTI. I think everybody's aware of the assessment program. Kendra and I have been supplying information to the consultants to help us with assessment and strategic planning for IT. We're currently in '18 going to be having off-site storage and long-term storage. Data is continuing to flow in at a very high rate, and we have to stay ahead of that curve in making sure there's storage available. We'll be doing also assisting in the Police Records Management System and any other projects that are related to that from our side. For GIS and City Works, there's initiative right now for document management. We expect to have an answer on what the direction we should go in the next 60 days. We want to get our arms around this whole document management concept and all the departments. So we've engaged every department to have a representative to be part of the team that'll select or at least recommend going forward from, from this point on. And that'll be something that we'll be doing, working on heavily in '18. Also in '18, for GIS, we've purchased some new iPads that we're getting more into the mobile aspect of our environment. Not only do we, you know, service brick and mortar, now we're servicing vehicles with rubber tires that are mobile offices, and people with tennis shoes are carrying mobile offices. So we're, we're, we're working very hard to support those. And one of the things that is happening is doing actual data entry in the field, and that'll take place in '18 for the GIS. I'd like to also thank all the departments who have supported us in 2018, especially Council, or 2017, excuse me, because without all your support, it'd be really tough to do this job. We are also going to be working very hard with all the departments in '18 to hopefully help them with their, their initiatives and making sure we're delivering the services that they expect. I hope that's what you were looking for, and if you could ask questions, that'd be great.
Kendra, maybe you could just talk about the Internet, how we're approaching that versus how we were approaching.
So our new Internet connection here will be a secondary Internet connection. We currently have two. We added the one out over at the Justice, this passed earlier this year into the summer, with a goal to make that kind of a redundant connection. If one side goes down, everything can kind of flow through the other side, same, you know. Then vice versa, if the city side goes down, we can flow back through the Justice.
So you use consolidated electric?
Yes, the second, second connection here will be consolidated electric. The connection over in Justice is with Frontier.
We have saved some dollars, too.
Yes.
Yes, we'll be using our, our own fiber connection that goes all the way to Columbus, so we're not paying any transport fees.
Other questions for IT?
I also mentioned, we have talked to Delaware County about perhaps there's some areas where we can work with them in terms of their resources, and you can maybe just elaborate on some of that.
Yes, we met with Steve Lewis, Kendra and I, to discuss some opportunities maybe both of us could, could work on. And Kendra and I have been working on how we would present the department. It's, it's not like it was 10 years ago. I mean, everything has changed, and so we need to change with it. And so one of the things that we have the ability to do is move computing to another location. And so we're looking at that, whether or not we could buy some computing time, really share some computing time with, with Delaware, with Delaware County, maybe even our antivirus software licensing. Could even be that we're looking at our exchange server for email and so forth. So we are looking at everything, not just one, one individual thing. They've been very kind in offering us to, to work together on whatever project that we think that, that might fit for both of us. We've also engaged Consolidated Electric, too, for, you know, we're a partner with them in our fiber projects, and had them look into whether or not we could, could possibly use their services also. And we are renting space from them in, in Columbus to store our backup, backup system. It gets us off-site, that'll eliminate a tape we're currently taking to the bank every day. We won't have to do that anymore.
I should also mention that, given the fact that there'll be a lag time between the time that we have the assessment and some recommendations regarding the structuring of the department, including the director, we have reached out to some third-party vendors in Columbus about providing some capacity to both Jeff and Kendra. And we met with a firm a couple of weeks ago. They provide services to New Albany and to Groveport, and we've been talking to them about some, you know, some capacity they can help us with all over the next few months, because this is an area where there's a lot of, a lot of different things that they're dealing with that between the two of them, it's, it's challenging. So that's, that's the other piece I wanted to share with Council.
Under Administrative Services on page 24, it jumps from 67,000 to 153.
Yeah, and they, we did, I went over this thing. We did not unfortunately update the programmatic budget.
Oh.
So this, this might be old numbers. I haven't even had a chance to take a look at it.
You can see right here, 67,153.
GIS.
No, Administrative Services.
I'm not sure what that number is for, but I can find out once you know.
What are you looking at?
Page 24 of the programmatic, what's the Administrative Services? The very last one in that second box, went from 67,000 to 153,000.
Yeah, I don't imagine Kendra and Jeff kind of, that, that category there.
I asked Tom, I didn't ask them.
Right, right.
But when Tom goes back tomorrow, I was going to ask them.
No, I asked them earlier today, and they had a chance to take a look.
Yeah, that's just allocating the cost. I don't know if there was more, I mean, Scott or Rob probably helped them with this, what they consider the administrative services, but. Let's see, let's see what the backup is going to follow up.
Other questions for Jeff or Kendra? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good job. You, too. Okay, Dean?
Oh, and he's got three notebooks. That's not a good thing.
Okay, finance budgets. It's on page 12, the line item in '17, and the programmatic. Not a lot changing in 2018, so I won't take too, too much of your time with that. Right now, we're in the midst of a lot of recruitment. In the last two months, we've had three retirements and one employee go on maternity leave. So we've been, been doing a lot of interviews of people. We do have some of the positions filled. Came up at an earlier meeting, I think it did. We had a new tax administrator, Lori Johnson, was here at a council meeting. She's doing a pretty good job by jumping into a, a pretty big position there, so working with her a lot to get things moving forward. Her promotion then created another vacancy at the position she previously had, so we're recruiting for that. By and large, staffing, there's not any proposed changes. We do try to do the best job we can in trying to keep our administrative costs as low as we can. Someone, I believe Jessica, mentioned earlier that they hadn't added any staffing since 2006. I think a good area is our utility billing office. When I came here in 1990, we had three people, and still have three full-time people. We backfill a little bit with some, some seasonal type of people to help out when we have, you know, people out. And that brings up another issue that's worked quite well for us. I think in 2017, we've brought on some people, not permanent, part-time. They're actually seasonal people. We found we did a recruitment in, in March of last year, just for people that were willing to work maybe six, eight, 10 weeks, 40 hours a week in an office-setting type of environment, and we recruited quite well. Had several people, I think we've actually utilized four or five people from that process. And I think John Donahue has one of them right now that's been filling in for his office administrator over there. But that helps us at times deal with some peaks, when, when the backlog's and getting some things done without, you know, the cost of bringing on full-time people. Technology is going to be a big issue for us in 2018. Hopefully, Sean can get that Fine Tech company in here. Maybe we can pick their brain a little bit about financial technology and utilize that. But we are moving forward. We're going to, for the end of the year, I hope to get, open up the process of taking proposals from software vendors to look at updating our major financial application software. The selection process is one challenge, implementing and converting is another. So that'll pretty much take up a lot of our time in 2018. Utility billing area, we hope to piggyback off the change with the AMI system. And early in the year, probably be coming to City Council, maybe before Bradley's, with the proposed changes to our utility ordinances as it pertains to our cycles, our billing cycles, how we hold landlords accountable for tenant bills and different things like that. But now with the ability to, in real time, provide information and be, and bill, not with estimated bills, I think we can really step up our efforts to try to keep people's current, current on their utility bills. A big challenge we have is with some of the multifamily and rental units and people in and out and trying to track them. That's pretty much the things, like I said, it's not going to be a big year for a lot of changes per se. I'd entertain any questions you may have related to finance budget or anything in general.
I have an easy, easy question for you, although maybe, maybe I have an easy answer. What do we have to do? I, it looks like we have about 10% of our utility customers are doing bill pay, auto bill pay. That, to me, that seems like an exceptionally low number. Of course, I'm a true advocate of that. Everything I can out of bill pay, I do, because I don't see the bills. So what do we have to do to try and increase that? Or is there a way for us, do we have a strategy to, to increase that number? Because I would assume that is going to lower our processing costs.
Has a huge impact. I reached out a couple of years ago when Delaware County Bank was still Delaware County Bank, because they were one of our primary depository institutions, and trying to throw them bone to see if they, we would help promote them as a bank, if they help us promote to customers and whatnot, that ability that they could pay electronically. I think more marketing, we've talked about that, not just in utility billing, but even in the income tax area. We get challenged every year. We have 4,000 or 5,000 residents that don't file tax returns, and that process to get them to file is lengthy. And typically, you know, we're used to, you know, in the old times ways, it's just the way it is. But I think getting out ahead of that and trying to market and communicate to people, using emails to try to remind people that they have to file tax returns. One of the things, though, with those automated payments is one approach, although we haven't done it yet, is to either incentivize it or mandate it. Some public estate's done it pretty much extensively, at least in our interactions. We don't have that ability to, to do things, to get checks or anything like that. Electronic and get access to information. It's a little more problematic when you're talking about 14, $15,000 residents, a pretty large percentage of them that still want to come down to that utility office and pay their bill. Plus, we have a number of people that are always in arrears. But that's part of one of those goals, is to try to raise that, because it does, it does impact our, I mean, it did not just from the standpoint of not having to open mail and whatnot, but we can automatically post those payments, so we don't have to go through the whole process of keying in the payments.
Then is there a way, and have we considered also, and again, being an auto bill pay guy, you know, I still get the paper bill in the mail, which to me is, yeah, yeah, kind of, well, halfway, yeah. I mean, can we just create that so that I just get a soft bill?
That is, I think, would be the first part of transitioning to mandated changes, you know, that initially allow people to not get their bill, but then perhaps get to that point now. Obviously, there's going to be people that don't have access to computers or whatnot, but, you know, going down that process to kind of cut back on our costs.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of places are doing it anymore. You can't, they don't even make it hardly optional anymore as far as mailing things out, so.
Yeah, it's kind of like asking for paper, sack, and crote, just kind of look at it. Thank you.
Maybe this plugs into the financial software, too, but we need to make sure we find a way to communicate with our residents, whether it's text message or email or whatever it is. We need a way to talk to them.
We're, we're building that, and it's a challenge, because you like to be able to push things out to everybody. But, you know, the problem is you don't have emails, and so then you incur that extra time of finding out who. Some can go with emails, but that's, that's, that's Nirvana. I mean, if we can get our utility customers and all of our tax to have the ability to communicate them with emails, it's not just sending their bills out electronically. It's, it's reminding them, hey, April 15th is coming up. You filed your tax return, and some of those things, try to cut down on the, the other people that aren't filing.
What about a mass texting service?
So what the schools use in terms of notifications?
Part of the, part of the downside potential is that because this, that whole concept's proliferating through everywhere, we all get these bombardments of emails that sometimes they go to junk files, and we have to be a little bit cautious if we're going to rely on the fact that we pushed out these emails, and if they're not getting them or they're, you know, getting, going to a spam file, then we assume they got the communication and they didn't. But I think there's, there's clearly areas where we can, you know, try to, try to communicate more.
You have Darren create the disclosure.
Well, one of the things, email, people aren't reading emails anymore.
No, it's text messages.
It's text messages now. And one of the ways that you can keep them from going to spam folders is having an opt-in. So people text a keyword to the city, and then that way, it's not recognized as spam. Because I use this in my business, people text me a keyword, and then I send out notifications.
One of the areas to even gauge, even to what George has said, especially with the utility customers, is the whole AMI, with, with the access they have to information. I mean, it's all right out there. And, you know, people aren't just doing it because we made them aware of it. So we've got to find a way to say, hey, you know, you can actually track your, your utility consumption and any number of other different things. When we selected the vendor, they didn't really have a solid way to link their water consumption levels with the billing side of things. But that'll be that next step that we'll want to take with that, so they can go to one place, because you don't want to go in there and find out, well, here's how much water I've used. I have to go to another website or something to find out what it actually resulted in a bill. Try to make that one place where they can go. But it's amazing how many people don't. I don't know, Brad, if you've got any numbers, but I know talking to the Laysdown Utility Office, there's just not that many that are really tapping into that. As issues come up, they seem to think, oh, yeah, well. And we send them communication, you know, trying to make them aware. It gets put into the, the monthly bill, but you really got to get more aggressive and find a better way to really reach out to people.
Is that, just from my kind of ignorance of use of Twitter, that's increasing the number of our followers on Twitter for the city residents? Does that get to a?
No, we were just talking about using like a mobile texting service.
You were saying also that people, oh, not using, just texting?
Just texting them directly.
Well, I would look to some of the tech folks out there. What's, what is it?
Dean's going to have the collection, you know, that's going to be the collection of information, and it has to spit out from there. So that's why.
But it clearly, you know, again, we've been trying to talk about this at the finance level, but it really does reach out. I mentioned something to Tom a, a year or two ago, and maybe that was part of the expanding, people helping leave. But, you know, that, that, I look at it as a public entity, you know, obviously, we want to market certain things, but sometimes even the not as exciting things like this, that marketing, getting that word out can be, you can see really a cause and effect, and try to communicate with people and staying on top of where people get their information. Again, we've been trying to build email database, but at some point, you know, as you said, people aren't looking at emails hardly anymore. So, yeah, put all that time and effort, and now you got to change, stay with the times. But, you know, it's the way, the way society communicates, so that might work to our advantage. Who knows?
Okay. Other questions for me? All right.
He gives me a cold star. He gives me a cold star.
Hey, you're up. Do you feel bad about it?
I actually feel worse about it. I sit there all this time, and I'm like, oh, here I am, I'm on my first. No, I'm good. I'm juiced up, ready to go. My programmatic budget apparently is on page 13. A lot of the things that I work on are things that interface and deal directly with City Council, or at least you're aware of. So I'm going to focus on the Prosecutor's Office, because that's where a lot of the, most of my budget comes into play. As you may recall from last year's budget, this year, funded last year, we did a process efficiency study for our front office functions of our Prosecutor's Office. That study made three recommendations. It recommended a staffing increase, recommended looking at increased use of technology, and it recommended process changes to make our office more efficient. This year in our budget, Melissa and I did not request any additional staffing, because we are, we've implemented the process changes, and we want to give them a chance to have an impact before we figure out if we need to add staffing. The plan is to look and see how those changes are working after about six months, and then follow up from there and see what we need to do. We're also going to take this year to evaluate. We're also going to take this year to evaluate technology options to see if we can pursue some more options, be more efficient as opposed to having to add staff. Because that's our last possible resort. With that said, it is possible that we may ask for another person next year, but we want to hold off on that as long as possible. Also want to throw out there that the passage of Marcy's law on the ballot this year could have a big impact on our administrative responsibilities for the prosecutor's office. But we're still trying to figure out what we have to do to comply with that and what it'll mean with our staffing. But the short answer to that is our $11,000 investment in the process study can be considered of paid for itself. Because I was fully prepared to ask for staff this year and it gave us some really good suggestions that can hold off on that at least for a year, possibly more. And a staff person costs more than that amount of money. So in that case, it was a good investment. Speaking of staffing at the prosecutor's office, on the lawyer's side, I think two years ago in the 2015 budget, we added a fourth prosecutor. That prosecutor was intended to do 30% criminal, 30% tax collection work and 30% civil work. That ended up being really hard to do with staffing shortages, with turnover that we had. And the criminal pressures were keeping that prosecutor from really helping out at all at civil. Melissa and I have realigned that responsibility. So now one of our assistant prosecutors handles the tax and the other one is given the civil responsibilities. I believe you've seen some of the fruit of that realignment because Chris has been over here and able to help on projects that you've seen. He worked on medical marijuana, he was instrumental in tethering. He helped me do some of that research for the executive session that came up last meeting. You've seen those projects, but he's actually been able to help out on a lot of projects that haven't come up to council's level. So I feel like we've really unlocked the value finally for that position helping out on the civil side. That fourth prosecutor is intended to be paid for, at least initially, by the tax receipts. As we talked about from the start, as we continue to work through that backlog of failure to files and people who filed but failed to pay. Our collections may go down. And also as people notice that we're out there charging it, hopefully everyone in this city will pay their taxes, in which case we won't have hardly any cases to prosecute. With that said, I think that in 2018, we, I continue to believe that the funding will, the collections will more than cover the position for next year. We've been filing about 20 cases a week, although there have been some gaps when, you know, the clerk's office is kind of on holiday and they don't want that many. Or when we have a gap in cases that are ready to file. Before that fourth prosecutor, we added an investigator who helps us on the investigation side of the prosecutor's office, but also runs a diversion program. That program charges a fee to people who are in court to participate. And funds collected from that position continue to cover the cost of that position and then some. Again, I'm projecting that we'll cover the position there. However, I want to note that a lot of these cases are marijuana cases. I am not sure how medical marijuana may impact that. Medical marijuana doesn't mean marijuana is legal, but it is possible that fewer tickets will be written or people who are abusing marijuana might get a medical purpose. So some of our cases may go down. Also, aside from the marijuana issue, with all of our fees, it's depend on how many people are charged and how many people participate. So I can guess based on our projections and how much I'm charging, but you never know how many people are going to get charged and get prosecuted. But I'm pretty confident that it'll continue along the trajectory it's seen. Finally, I want to address our other fees. We charge other jurisdictions. We are countywide municipal court, so we do all the misdemeanor prosecutions for the entire county. And with the exception of Shawnee Hills, we are the prosecutors for all the other jurisdictions and we have contracts with them and we charge them on a per-case rate. I've been adding to that rate a little bit every year to keep up with the cost of inflation or staffing. This year I'm adding another $5 per case to everybody but the county, bringing it to $210. So I'm projecting, assuming, again, we have the same number of cases come in the door, about $1,000 more in collections for that fee. Doesn't sound like much, but my budget's pretty small, so it actually changes the percentages pretty fair amount. But more importantly, this year, we're working with Tom to address the county. The county has been at $100 since before I got here. They have a completely different arrangement arising out of litigation back in 1990, was it 2007 or 97?
2000.
2007. So basically they've just kind of been stuck at 100 and we don't have that contract, it's just kind of this weird limbo. So we're finally going to address them and try to get them, not only up to $210, but any amount if we can get to, you know, 200, 150, 175. We'll close that gap and we'll have a real impact on helping fund prosecutor's office in this city. But that's, of course, probably wouldn't get done for this year's budget, but that's hopefully something we can work on this year. We have sent our first letter to the county and Tom and I will work on maybe being able to address that for 2018 budget. That money doesn't come necessarily to my budget, so you won't see a big increase for me next year, but it will help offset the general revenue fund that we put into it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
I do want to point out one more thing in case you're very carefully reading the programmatic budget. There is a spot in there for permanent part-time position, but I updated that it's actually a paid internship position. That is a position that we have staffed through the Alpha Group for helping someone with disabilities get experience working in an office. We had thought to maybe convert that over to permanent part-time because we like that particular person's doing a good job. But for this year, since we're going to probably relook at our staffing based on our efficiencies, we're keeping it as an internship. And then maybe next year you'll see a request to change that. But the, the new budget will be reflective to call up the intern at this. Very welcome.
Did you get all the questions answered for Lisa?
Yeah. Elaine is keeping a running tally of the questions and then I was going to respond back from Saturday. There were a number of questions, some were observations, some were just comments. We'll, we'll follow up with those and provide that to you for the, on the meeting on the 11th. That's really the second public hearing on the budget. And the court will be at that meeting, municipal court will be at that meeting to just review their budget. I do know there were a couple of, the Community Promotions Fund, I don't know if you wanted to spend any time looking over that. But that did come up in Saturday's meeting. And that is the fund that we use to provide community grants, if you will, to agencies that have made application to the city. And there were a number of requests this year. I know Jackie oversaw that process with council members. And I know there were some questions about that from Saturday, so. And I think what you're seeing in there reflects some changes, increases to some.
And just as a quick reminder, the, after we had met as a special events or community promotions committee. It, that's when the, after the, then the DORA passed. And at that time, I felt that the DORA is directly a promotional, a city promotional event. And so then we had to make provisions for the DORA signs, which are not cheap, to come out of that. So I went ahead and just because of the lateness and the timing, I thought I would go ahead and make a proposal that council could then review during this, during this session. And see where, what you would like to do with the money. If you, if you take a look at the memo I gave you Saturday, you know, you have your 2018 proposed, which is where we kind of all landed after our meeting. And then I did a proposal, the proposed revision. One of the things that I, that the committee was not aware of, that there may be a trip to bomb holder. And so the sister city has to be funded a little bit higher than what we anticipated. And then we received an email from Lisa that stated that, you know, she was not comfortable with drawing down the fund balance. And so taking all those, the signs, bomb holder and trying to stay away from the fund balance. I made some proposed revisions, but I'm happy to make even further revisions at the wish of council.
Like Kent said at the last meeting, I would really like to see Main Street fully funded at 25. Okay, I think the value to the community is, especially after the weekend that we just had, overwhelming.
Okay, so doing that, do we want to, is it your proposal that we draw down the fund balance?
No, I said to take it from the somebody in Arts Castle 25.
Yeah.
I'd rather see us draw down the fund accounts by $5,000.
My concern is that with, my, my major issue with drawing down fund balance for ongoing expenses is that at some point, the fund balance will be gone. And what we're creating is a situation where some of these organizations are depending upon the city for funding. And then once the fund balance is gone, then we have to make the hard decisions. It's almost, I'm not saying we shouldn't maybe take a little, but I think that we, we have to really consider that if these are going to be requests every year and this is an ongoing funding situation.
Well, I think, I'm thinking here, we're not going to have the DORA funding at the level it is now. Probably not going to have Sister City necessarily that, at that level of a year to do those travels. I just, I, I agree with the comments about Main Street, they've done an excellent job and I'd like to afford to fund. But on the same token, I think the Arts Castle is a great asset and somebody's a great asset. I don't really want to see us reduce those in order to provide that extra $5,000 for Main Street.
Well, personally, I would, I've got Sister City. And that, that does, that for, for the everyday resident in this city, those funds do nothing for them. You know, I mean, I look at, I look at Swiki and, and the Second World Community Initiative. You know, I, I see where that, any monies, you know, we're taking monies from that, which has absolutely tangible deliverables. When you look at their programs and they're really ramping up and, and making a difference to the people that interact with those programs. I can't, you know, I can't in good conscience say, oh, we're going to decrease air funding and then we're going to increase funding for Sister City. Which again, I think has no value to the vast majority of residents in this city.
No value?
None, none.
You're saying to the vast majority?
To the vast majority of residents in this city.
It's going to be temporary, I like the idea of drawing the fund out.
Chris, Kent, what are you thinking?
You said draw it down.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I just got to get it on the head of this.
As long as we're not drawing it down every year for massive quantities and then creating a situation.
Sure.
I mean, I think an occasional special circumstance like a DORA is okay.
If that's a wish of council, then I will make these revisions, we'll make the change in from Monday night. Okay, for the budget.
Thank you.
Are you still leading out wardmen and historical preservation then? Because that went down to zero. Okay, everybody's still okay with that?
So that's item, that's one of the items that was outstanding is parking. There are going to be some expenses related to implementing some of the parking recommendations for next year in particular. Some meters that have to be meters, increased number of meters on the street. I talked to Bruce about that earlier today as to whether we, at what point we want to consider the, the whole smart meter. I think at this point, it's, it's pricey and there's another option out there that Bruce has made a recommendation about, which is a kind of a mobile app. But we still are going to, we are still faced with some expenses related to that. You know, Kent, you had mentioned something Saturday as well.
What I'd really like to see, Tom, is we've got that matrix and you've got the one-year stuff, we've got the three-year stuff. What I'd like to see is staff to start getting back those, what those recommendations are going to cost.
Okay.
I think that's really helpful, just to have that.
Well, I can have some of that for, I can have that, some of that for Monday. And if it turns out that there has to be appropriation made, then we can just present that to you. I'll tell you what that, I'll tell you what that is.
I think that also helps us keep this thing moving because now we've got a price tag on it and we know which ones we're going to fund and it just helps.
Okay, okay.
We're still painting the meters, correct?
Yes, and I'm going to put Bruce on the spot because they are going to be, there are some changes in that regard.
So the question was about painting meters?
We're still moving forward with that.
Correct, we're going to paint all the blue meters black.
Okay, just curious. I parked in a blue meter over the weekend and somebody was yelling at me that that was a handicap space. It's actually not.
Despite the color.
I think it's just confusing.
Why did you choose black? I'm just curious.
Would you like?
I'm just afraid people aren't going to know what it's for.
Well, we put 10-hour meters, stickers on all the 10-hour meters and I think it's just going to be a learning curve, quite frankly. Our, our three-hour meters are gray or silver, so we just darkened it up, went black. The monochromatic paint scheme to not, you know, clash with the city's palette of colors. I just came up with that.
So anyway, we can follow up on that, Kent. The pay ordinances will come to you for first reading for Monday night for adoption on the, the 19th. And that reflects that the 2% pay increase for the pay plan employees. And there's still a merit program for the, for the directors. Regarding pay, my employment agreement, we changed that a couple of years ago to allow the conversion of my automobile allowance. And that's reflected in here and I'll send you a memo as a follow-up on that. So you've got that information, but that's reflected in my, yeah, the city manager's budget under personnel. You'll see that number has gone up, so that's, that's why now I'll do a follow-up memo on that. Was there anything else that, anybody else had? Alcohol, alcohol, that's right. At the beer sales at the golf course. You had requested that information and there is a memo that we have that really restarts the conversation we had in 14. Where council had an ordinance before you and you ended up tailing unanimously. And so that really is the, what Elaine is passing out is what Jackie and Ted worked on earlier today. Ted worked on earlier today regarding the expense side of this. This follows Lisa's request and the motion that was made at Saturday's meeting to, to begin sale of beer at the Hidden Valley. So if we were to move ahead with this, we would have to change the budget with respect to reflecting these, these costs. Alternatively, the chief had mentioned to me earlier today, this came up before, that another option is just to allow the consumption of beer at the golf course. That doesn't accomplish the, the idea that this is going to generate revenue, but it does reduce.
Start that, you can't go back.
Yeah, I have an issue with that because we, with this, we have control around what we sell and all that. You start bringing your beer to the golf course.
Well, they're already, I think part of it is they're already, I guess they're already bringing. I think part of the concern, and Bruce, you can elaborate on this, was just the point of sale and making, ensuring that the people that are selling the beer are obviously trained and, and just the.
My, my concern, and I recall this from the previous conversation, was we're going to have part-time seasonal employment. have part-time seasonal employees responsible for selling alcohol on behalf of the city of Delaware. And, you know, and we can be part of that, part of that education, but that'll be a, a serious issue to manage and address. The other thing that worries me is really site-specific is I, I went out there and if you're serving alcohol, and just the caveat, my, my job here is to kind of be the nervous parent as a police chief. So, I'm not anti-alcohol. I, I like the idea of the DORA and, you know, we've, we've kind of progressed to the F2 downtown, so I'm not anti-alcohol. But I worry about the liability of the city when we become the, the sales point for the alcohol and especially at Hidden Valley because when you're coming up out of Hidden Valley, there's a little bit of a blind curve there today. And so, just, just to make sure I wasn't being too overly cautious, I, I went out just to look at it, just to make sure, you know, that, that it was accurate. And I, I got up there and I thought, it's really not that bad. And then as I pulled out, I realized I pulled out in front of a car that I didn't see. So, it just worries me that you're, you're mixing alcohol, a little bit of a dangerous intersection, and city involvement in the sale of that alcohol. And we just really need to carefully decide what liability we want to incur there and whether that's a risk we want to take on. And if we do, how we address training and hiring and making sure that our staff is in compliance with what we want to do.
It's really kind of where we were a few years ago. We can, it's...
Just to clarify, sorry.
Fixing, putting it in the budget wouldn't allow it to happen. We would have to re-bring forward the actual code change as well, so.
So, you voted on Fri- Saturday to put it in. So, what we'll do is we'll reflect the changes, these expenditure increases in here as part of the budget. Unless, and then there's a series of other steps you'll have to take from amending the ordinance and that type of thing. But is this...
Let's put it in, but let's all give us some serious thought.
Yeah. From a strictly financial standpoint, this makes sense because we recover our investment the first year, then it's considerably five or $8,000 a year profit. But the chief's points are all good ones and that can be wiped out by one bad thing happening.
We'll be okay with that? Okay. We all need to drive down there too and leave and just have a good feel for whatever you saw.
Well, I went to go by there to try to drive down there, but the gate is closed and you can't even get down there.
It's because they knew you were coming.
Is it always closed like that?
No.
Okay.
Well, the course is not open.
But I mean, we don't allow any access to it at all?
I think this was not just, it's just closed for the season right now.
Okay.
Yeah. But if Lisa wanted to go down there, she...
Yeah. There, there was enough room. I pulled in, did, did a turnaround at the gate and then pulled back out as if I would be pulling out from the facility.
Your intent was to go see the course.
Right. I mean, I'd love to see it sometime.
Let's, let's, what range to get you down there?
Yeah, we can do that. And also, we want to get, getting the public down there just as a recreational source too.
Okay. Anything additional? Like you're all looking at it at the same time.
I have one quick thing. I apologize.
Yes.
This is budget, but not budget-related. In the way we amended our process earlier with the fee ordinance review, every year, kind of around budget time, we're supposed to look at it, see if we need to adjust any fees. I don't see, the fees that I've gotten back to propose for your consideration won't really impact the budget. They involve the tree caliper issue that we talked about earlier and Ted's got some rental fees for some rental things. So, they're, they're not significant budget changes, but that should be coming for first reading sometime in December. But you won't have to pass it in December like you do the budget by default, let you know that that is coming.
The other thing I would ask, because I assume this is the, we're not going to go review Thursday and the next review is really Monday, is to, if you can, go through the other funds, which are towards the end of the line item budget. You have the revolving loan fund in there. You have the Glenn, Glenn Road fund in there. If you have questions about those, or a lot of those contain projects in them, and I just want you to review them. If you have questions, let us know. I don't want anybody to say, well, I didn't see that. So, if you get a chance, go through the, there's, some of them are straightforward, but there's a number in there relating to the court. There's a number in there related to the police department. Bruce uses funds from some of those funds for some of his expenses. Just take a look at those and make notes, comments, and then we can, if we have questions, get those addressed at Monday night's meeting.
Okay. So, y'all want to sign by the end of Thursday night off, agree?
Most of the journey.
Okay. Well, if we have no further, I guess we're adjourned at 8:35.
Kent's having...
Oh, sorry.
Let's just, good things. Tom points out in here that our conference plan update wire system 204, the point, the relax thing, maybe as a Lee thing, we get a word out about your tax laws. These are significant things that we're going to be accomplishing in 2017. It'd be good to let people know that. The amount of other thoughts that this tough you quartered in the National League of Cities just underscores the importance of getting really crusty aquatic and out of development because that's where, that's where the road is going to come from. So, just a couple of thoughts. Sorry, Chris.
No problem.
Hey, motion to adjourn?
You're not hurting.
I think we're adjourned at 8:35.
I've got a 10-year old waiting.
Hey, Chris, thanks.